Welcome, everybody. City council members and individuals that are in the audience to our regular scheduled city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 19th, 2015, and it is 6:00 PM, and I do call this meeting to order. And as always, at the second meeting of the month, we have the Youth of the Month, and we have teacher Ron Steinhaus is here tonight. Come on up, Ron, and if you would, bring your students with you, too.
The first item on the agenda, I would like to move the resolution to bring back Summer.
Second.
We have a second to the motion.
First of all, you stand in front of me, and now you take over my meeting.
Well, I just learned all this good experience from the New London Council, you know, where I've been there for six years, so. And I want you to know that our last packet was 16 pages.
Thank you, Ron.
And about 47 minutes, so.
Not much going on in New London.
No, no. It's a dead spot, for sure. Thank you. This is an opportunity to certainly showcase some of the students that you have here at Wapaka High School. I did teach at New London for 44 years, English and speech, and then retired, and then Mrs. Luce asked me to come over and assist her, and so this is now my sixth year that I've been working with the students here. And certainly, you need to be very, very proud, number one, of a fantastic student body, a fantastic school, a fantastic administration, and the support that you have, not only from the parents, and boy, they've been in and helping us a lot throughout in terms of fundraising, our tournaments, and so on and so forth, and just the real behind-the-people wheels, if you will. So be proud, in case you haven't thought about that. Again, be proud of your school system here. I have been working primarily within the world of forensics. We're not dealing with body parts at this particular point. We're dealing more with the activity of speech and speech communication. And this deals all the way from original works that students write themselves and present, to the interpretive events where they are in reading and/or interpreting what someone else has necessarily written. The advantage, basically, is that, number one, it gives them some lifetime skills. It's not as though they're going to be hobbling around with two broken knees or something of that sort, no offense, sports people, but this is definitely a lifetime skill. And I have students right now, former students of mine who have, are working in Washington, DC, as speech writers, who are working in the FBI in Alaska, Washington, and Oregon, basically spread throughout the entire country. I have the head oncology doctor in Milwaukee, was one of my former orators at one particular time, so it opens a wide, wide world, really, of where they might want to go and what they might want to necessarily do. As I said, it's a skill that is going to take them places that the normal student probably will not get. And for your information, many of the colleges today and universities are looking for not so much the GPA, the grade point average, as they're looking for those students who've been involved in the skills of speech and communication, debate, those kinds of activities, because they are the ones who really are able to open up the world to other individuals along the way. But enough of my blabbering, and let me introduce to you the individuals that we have here. I'm going to start on my left. First of all, you're looking at Cole Pancratz. Cole has been active all four years. He's earned the highest degree from the National Speech and Debate Communication, which is the degree of premier outstanding honor. He is at almost the top of his class with just a 3.99 grade point average. I don't know where he screwed up along the way, but I would assume it must have been a home ec. or something of that sort, probably. Cole will be, and most of these students will be, traveling, leaving Thursday morning for Fort Lauderdale, Florida, for the National Catholic Forensic League Tournament. So they will be in competition. They have all qualified in that light. Cole will be, actually, he triple-qualified in Student Congress, so he could very well take over for you here. He, not that I'm saying you can't, okay? He qualified in Oral Interpretation, which is prose and poetry, and also in Original Oratory, and that is the event that he's going to be speaking on, on anger control. Next here, we have Ryan, thank you, Ryan Weise. I got there, okay. Ryan is co-partnered with Kelsey Wolfgram. He and Kelsey are doing a duo interpretation, which is entitled...
Countdown to Love.
And the two of them working together, they may not look at each other, they may not touch each other, but they have to coordinate and actually be themselves, so they're almost as a twosome functioning as a single individual. Ryan is one of our four-point students here at Wapaka High School. That was until this semester came along. This semester will also be a four-point, I hope. Good, okay. Well, you know, we don't want you to get down too fast, too quick, or something of that sort. So again, praises to Ryan. To my immediate right, we have Emily Cummings. I'm sorry, Nicole Weise, the partners here. Nikki is the sister of Ryan, and has just came from track practice. I was supposed to keep my nose away, but that's okay. She is also involved, along with Emily, in duo interpretation, and they're doing the work Steel Magnolias. That's a rather complicated scene, because they're actually dealing with three different scenes and melding them together as one. Next, we have Christian Bump. Christian is in Oral Interpretation. He's doing two selections, one of them a poetry selection entitled "How to Watch Your Brother Die," and a prose selection entitled "Almost Normal." So he will be actually reading from a manuscript and doing that interpretation from the author's point of view. Next to that, as I mentioned already, we do have Emily Cummings. Emily is a senior this year. Emily is the partner here to Nikki, and has a 3.99 or 3.98? No, it's up there somewhere, yes. So again, you're seeing some of the creme de la creme, if you will, that we have here at Wapaka High School. Next, we have Ryan Phillipson. Ryan is one of our sophomores this year, correct? And although Ryan is not going on to the national tournament, he was the winner at our Wapaka tournament in terms of what we call the double quad, what do we call it? The double...
Double crown.
Double crown, thank you. Double crown, basically, says he had to be involved in two events, and he placed the highest of all of the students that were at the tournament in that particular event. So that's certainly a prestigious honor. To his right, I always have to stop and think, because left and right to me is, this way, this way, and I get lost standing still, so they're going to have to keep me straight there in Florida. We have Emily Meyer. Emily is also a sophomore. She is involved also in Original Oratory. Her goal this year is to convince the entire audience to forget about all the regrets that you've ever had in life, to regret, regret. It's a rather interesting, different type of topic, but perhaps one that will shine because it is different. And certainly, last but not least, over there at the far end, we have Tom Phillipson. Thomas is a senior. Thomas is also involved in duo interpretation. We have a lot of interp people at Wapaka, and I think part of that is the arts of the community really bring out the arts that are in our students themselves. And again, I think we have to commend the whole community, and your community theater and so on, for supporting those arts along the way. So he is performing Jerry Finnegan's Sister along with his partner, Kelsey Wolfgram. What's that? I'm sorry, yes. I can't keep all these kids straight, you know? We started out with 68 of them, so, you know, it was a little bit hectic, yes. Okay, I'm sorry, Thomas, you know? That's the way it goes when you get old, you know? You forget a few things here and there. Yes, he is working with McKenna Mesa and Jerry Finnegan's sister. So these are the students, most of whom will be leaving Thursday morning early for Fort Lauderdale, and again, I want you to give them a round of applause for the wonderful work that they have done, the fact that these are going to be the people that will, in one day, be sitting in the chairs behind me. That's assuming, of course, they stay in Wapaka. And we have some certificates of recognition. This is certified, this one to Emily Cummings for Outstanding Youth of the Month Award. Emily? And then to Nicole Weise, and Ryan Weise, and Christian Bump, and Ryan Phillipson, and Thomas Phillipson, Cole Pancratz. Dakota Marlega was not able to be with us this evening, so with your permission, I will present that to her tomorrow when I see her, and Emily Meyer. And at this point, then, you would like us to lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please. Everyone, please rise, face the flag here, whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Nice job. Yeah, I gotta get that microphone away from him. Okay, as we continue, I know we got the coloring contest coming up very shortly, but let us get through a couple of items here, and then we'll get to that. Sandy, if you would, would you read the Clerk's open meeting statement for us?
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin State statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thank you, and would you also take role for us?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczalski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Gillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Sandy. Consent agenda, these are items that we're going to take one motion on in one second and vote on those with that one motion. Sandy has one item that she handed out tonight?
Under number six, Consent Agenda, letter D, number one, the Parks and Recreation Minutes of a regular meeting on May 14th, 2015, were distributed.
Thank you. Is there any items that council would like to see moved from the Consent Agenda to the Regular Agenda? If not, we'll need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Keeland, second by Hagan, that we approve the Consent Agenda with that one addition. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Regular Agenda, these are items that will take individually, Sandy, you did have some handouts there also? Or you didn't?
Well, it was emailed earlier, the sewer service charge.
Okay, okay. And Sandy put that on your desk as well as it was emailed to you. Anything else, council? If not, again, we're looking for a motion to approve the Regular Agenda. Motion by Hackett, second by Gillian Peterson, that we approve the Regular Agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, let's move on, then, to what we've all been waiting for here, the winners of the National Public Works Coloring Contest, and Henry is going to help me in handing these out. So we have the following individuals, if you want to just come out in front here. It's Brayden Harris, Benji Becker, Tiana Miller, Brayden Stern, Carter Furmanek is ill today, won't be here, Maya, sorry, Walla...
Wawzinski.
There we go, Wawzinski. Haley McClellan, and Connor Taggart.
How you guys doing? Thanks. As the mayor said, we're at the point of the agenda that everybody's been waiting for. This is like becoming a tradition, the coloring contest. I believe this is the 19th year of us doing it, and we appreciate all you guys' interest in the event. We have two, four, eight winners to present. One is absent, as the mayor had said. Brayden, where are you? Brayden, can you show us your picture, please? Very good. Brayden is with Mrs. Anderson's class at the Wapaka Learning Center. Come over here, and then we'll show the next one. Our next winner is Benji Becker. Benji, can you show us yours? Very good. Thank you. And Tiota Miller? Tiota?
Not here.
Okay, Tiota is with Mrs. Seifert's class at the WLC. Brayden Stern, can you show us yours? Very good, thanks, Brayden. Brayden is in Mrs. DeRay's class in the Learning Center. Carter Furmanish? Carter?
Nancy is absent.
Oh, okay, sorry. He's in Mrs. Hanky's class. Maya Wowenitsky?
Wawzinski.
Wawzinski. You know what? You could spell your name in first grade. You're doing great. Can you show us your? Awesome, thank you. Girls in Public Works, it's great, we need more of you. Haley McClellan. Haley, show us your picture, please. Haley's at the Chain School. Great, thank you. And then Connor, show us yours. Very good, thank you. Can we give these guys a big round of applause? Now, you saw all the Students of the Month, right? Those were big kids, right? Big students? Well, you're getting something more than a certificate. You're getting a gift certificate to the Dairy Queen, so for your winning. Now, mayor, help me out, John has that all. Thank you. So you can take your brothers out, or your mom and dad for a bite to eat, or something, but we really appreciate your interest. Now, what we've done, I believe in the past, we have displayed these up in the lobby of the City Hall, and we'll do that for the whole year, so when you bring your buddies in, or your friends, you can point to your picture, your coloring contest winner, so we really appreciate it. Thank you. And then we're going to bring our Carter back, probably the next meeting, when you deal with that. Yes, and Tiota, Tiota Miller.
Anybody want any pictures? You guys want to, three of you on this side, you three, come on over here. You guys want to, you, thank you, get right close to your pictures. See if we can get pictures of you getting in there. Smile. Thank you very much. We have, under announcements, still, we have a thank you note from Ann Linden. She's with the Wapaka Book Fest, that's just for your information only. Next, we have public input. Public input is set aside for a citizen that would like to speak to the city council on a non-agenda item. If there's anybody in the audience, or even a council member, that would like to speak to us on an item that is not on our agenda tonight, please give your name and address, step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Seeing none and hearing none, we'll move on to department announcements and reports. As always, again, at our second meeting of the month, we do like to hear from our department heads and tell us what's going on in the city. So Kathy, we'll start with you.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everyone. According to my report that I put in the packet, worse, the department is assisting the Community Development Department in evaluating development within the TIDS, and also with reviewing the status of the TIDS for a future presentation to the council. We are reviewing, as you can see from tonight's agenda, financial policies and making recommendations to update the municipal code. And I'm also working with PMA Financial Network on a project to develop a cash flow report for the city. I've worked with PMA in my former municipality, and they've agreed to use their intern in their office to develop the reports for us for no charge, so we'll have samples of the reports in the June packet for everyone, otherwise I don't have anything else.
All right, thanks, Kathy. I know you're going to have a few items later in the packet. Peg, library.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Well, the library board did adopt the strategic plan that was created with Connie Obert's help, and we have three new youth on board that are going to help us get started with this, and our next step is then to create goals and objectives to help meet the needs of our community. We do have a program, Squarefoot Gardening, at noon on Friday, and it is a lunch and learn. You just need to make reservations, come for lunch and for the program. Baby Garden is still on, on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, but all other children's programs are taking a break until we start our big summer library program next month. Our theme for the year is every hero has a story, and so we're really talking about those people who show great courage or have heroic acts, and we're really talking about the idea that there's a hero in all of us. Our Altar Book Exhibit is through Friday, and we will be closed Saturday and Monday for the holiday. Our seed library is open and available, so if anybody needs seeds for their garden, you can stop on by, thank you.
All right, thank you, Peg. Development Director Brennan.
Thank you, mayor, members of council, my reports in the packet. Our department is getting relatively busy now, we're definitely seeing an uptick in some of the development and construction that's occurring, whether it's home remodels or new commercial projects, or additions to homes, so there's definitely an uptick in that. Also, with the spring season, minus today's winter weather, we're definitely seeing an increase in more coenforcement complaints coming in for grass cutting, and as the snow melted, more stuff out on people's lawns, so we're starting to take care of that. Finishing up the last of the grants for the Main Street project that's due next week, submitting that for the Community Development Block Grant. And with that comes a plethora of requests for proposals and qualifications that staff will be bringing forward to you guys within the next month here. Currently working on one for the Main Street Master Plan Downtown Parking Utilization Study. Will also be looking at one probably in the next couple of months in conjunction with working at the Finance Department, our marketing plan that we're looking at for the TIDS, so that will be coming forward. Also working on the coenforcement position change, that'll be coming forward to you guys probably in the next quarter. That's all I have.
Thanks, Brennan. Next, Roger, you got? Yeah, good, thank you. Roger is stepping in, obviously, for our vacant Public Works Director, and he's going to give us a report from each one of the supervisors that make up the Public Works Department. Rog?
Well, we finished West Fulton Street paving last Wednesday. The marking went down on Friday and reopened. We are doing some thermoplastic crosswalk stopbar onleys and arrows that we're putting down ourselves, we're working on them now. The Hillcrest Project is going to be starting this week, some, putting in some catch basin boxes, and doing a little two service repairs, and removing one manhole and putting a bell box in for the Water Department. We repaved the end of Water Street here last Friday, smoothed that up. The Water Department repaired two services that were leaking, one on Royalton, one on Jefferson Street, and the Wall East Water Treatment Plant, did some lift station work and some maintenance on those, and also re-roofing the roof at the Crystal River Lift Station that had bed shingles on it, along with all the other various stuff we work on daily.
Awesome, thank you, Roger. Fulton Street is getting any compliments on that? Holy cow, that's awesome.
Yeah, I've gotten a lot, as many compliments as I've had people, you know, ripping on the street for long period of time, so it's fantastic, great job.
Yeah, and timely, too. I can't believe how quickly you got it done. That's nice. Next, then, we have Aaron, Parks and Rec Director.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I just want to touch on a few things not in the report. The Augie Austin Gym Floor will be done with construction on June 1st, or a couple days before, however, the finish that's being applied to it will not allow people to be on it for about 12 days after, that's a little longer period than there will be in future years, since it's the first year they have to put a couple coats on it. So we're looking at June 12th for full use of that gym. Mentoring meeting is not in your packet either, that, we had a mentoring meeting last Tuesday, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, we had about 20 people in attendance, hoping to get 20 people matched with 20 littles, and we already have six applied, that was before the meeting even started, so I think, I think we'll be on track to meet that. We're currently looking into recreation software. The software is called ActiveNet, just kind of in the beginning stages of it right now. If we did try to pursue this, this would be done through donor money and not through taxpayer money. Rick, our cemetery, Sexton, will be retiring May 29th, so that's coming right up, and we're looking to get work done in various ways in his absence, so we're working through that, but Rick's been with us for about 30 years, and he's been a great employee, and we'll definitely miss his services. We have a movie in the park, June 5th, that's down at South Park, so we're ramping up for that and encourage everyone to put that on their schedule. Achieve is working with us on possibly creating or putting out a proposal for a bike and pedestrian plan for the community. plan for the community. That's gonna be a little bit of a process, but we're in the beginning stages right now. And then, I think the last time I reported, Terry Moe was still our Senior Center Coordinator, and that is no longer the case, she has accepted another job with Johnson Family Insurance, her last day was May 7th. Terry has done a great job in the Senior Center for us for about 25 years, and we are looking to review that job description right now, or in the process of it, I'll bring something forward on June 2nd to pass some minor changes, and we'll look to hire, hopefully have that position filled mid-July, if we feel comfortable with the candidates, so, and that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Aaron. Chief Coke?
Thanks, Mayor. My packet, my monthly report is in your packet, we had our meeting just this evening, we had changed it to accommodate some interview schedules, we're interviewing for the one position, police officer, we interviewed three candidates today, we'll be doing background checks and identifying a viable candidate within the next couple of weeks. One other thing that came in, we had our Culvers Crime Stoppers fundraising a few weeks ago, and we netted about $316 in donations, which is up from last time, and again, that money is used for the Quick 50 program, and for funding and maintaining the online drug tip line. Budget-wise, we're at 33% of the budget year, and we've expended about 30.37%, the rest is informational.
All right, thank you, Chief. Okay, and Henry.
Thanks, Mayor. My report starts on page 39 of the packet. A couple things on the, in the personnel area, we are actively in the recruitment stage for our next Director of Public Works, the deadline is May 27th, so if you know anyone that might be interested, please encourage them to visit our website and review those materials. And then, mid-June will be the kickoff of our job description study, and that'll begin, and it'll take a number of months to work through that. I did make you aware of a little bit of a hit to our personal property, overall assessments, now that cable TV is a statewide franchise, they made a, an appeal to the state, and much of their equipment and personal property has been exempted. For our city, it's, you know, $570,000 off our personal track, personal property tax rolls, and that's probably 20% or 25% of our base. It's not a huge number, you know, maybe $6,000 in lost revenue, but it, you know, it's significant when you look at our overall personal property tax base. And then finally, Brennan and I, one of the things that came out of some of the downtown visioning, as well as a small business forum that he got going, was the need to get some more downtown events, and we're working on that, there's some chamber representation on our committee, as well as some business owners. And we wanted to start small this year, and we've picked two events, one at the end of August, August 27th, it's a putt-putt golf tournament, and then, at the end of September, oh, excuse me, October 1, we're planning a tailgate party, and that's homecoming weekend, so we hope to integrate the events and get more activity downtown. Those events, we will be bringing forward official street closures and more information. The homecoming event, the tailgate party, is alcohol-free. The golf event, the folks that are involved in this would like to propose the ability for people to walk on the streets with an open container, and, you know, we'd have to define the area. We are working up exact, more precise proposal, and wanna get information from other communities that's doing that, but I wanna make you aware of it, I'd really appreciate if you have major concerns, or want to provide some input to Brennan, myself, Terry, Mitch at the chamber, please do on that concept. I mean, it would be a limited area of the Main Street, very likely just like a two-block area, and it would be for a set period of time, you know, while the golf tournament is going on, so it wouldn't be an all-night affair by any means, but it's a big change from our licensing in the past, so please seek us out if you have any, any comments, and I think next month we'll be bringing a formal proposal to you, so, thank you, Mayor.
All right, thanks, Henry. Aaron, I forgot to ask you a question. In the senior advisory minutes, there was a recommendation on the fees for the seniors to use the Senior Center, what's the process there? Cause I, it's not on the council packet, I just, it's gonna go through your...
They just discussed fees, and whether to raise them or not, the Senior Center Advisory Committee had voted, their recommendation was to not raise them, and actually, that was for a two-year period.
Three years? It's for a three-year period.
Three? Okay, thank you. And, you know, that can get reevaluated year after year, I think, even if it was a recommendation by that committee, I think we can bring it up.
Okay, so, you don't plan on doing anything until the budget process on, on that discussion with the, with the council, or with your board?
We'll probably, we'll, we'll look at everything, so, I'm not saying it's completely off the table, but yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Can I ask Brennan something?
Sure.
And this is something silly, but I read your report, and I had some difficulty, and why I had this difficulty because of the RFQ, the RFP, the CED, the CFO, the ECWRPC, the CED, the TID, the GIS, and the STP. Brennan, I know you work with these every day, and your report shows it, but I don't work with them every day, and I had a hard time knowing what, I didn't know everything now, and I really do like to know what it means. Maybe one time, when you do your report, you could at least tell us what each means as you do it the first time, and then we would know for the whole report.
Can certainly do that.
And then I went to Peggy's report, and it went S-L-A-G-Y-A-L-S-A, SLP, and VIP, and I, yes, I know what VIP means, and then I read a little bit further, and it was volunteer and partnership, and I went, oh, wow. So, I really would appreciate you people saying what it is, cause I have a hard time when you come with all these.
Understood, go ahead, Dave.
I too have a question of Brennan, and just, I drove through King today, and I saw the shop that had closed, and now it's open with a motorcycle repair. Is that not the one from Churchill Street moving out there? I didn't catch the name, I didn't look that close at it, but is that entity that's gonna go into the Churchill Street one, still planning on doing that?
I have not heard of anything, the last communication that we had with them is that they did need state-approved plans, cause they were changing the use of the building off of Churchill Street, but nothing has actually come through our office at the moment for change of use. I know our building inspector went out there, and we, they, he met with the state inspector, along with their building contractor, but there hasn't been any activity at that site at the moment.
Okay, anybody else have any questions of the department heads at this time? All right, let's move on then to unfinished business, or kind of unfinished business here, this is a request by Alderperson Paul Hagan to reinstate the Board of Public Works for an interim, interim period until the hiring of a new Director of Public Works. Paul, again, your name is on this, so you wanna just start the discussion, please?
Sure. In the absence of a Public Works Director, I thought it would be a good idea to reinstate the Board of Public Works to have a few more sets of eyes, and some, some additional input in, into this, into our Public Works, while we do not have a Director. So I wanted to bring up the discussion of possibly bringing back the Public Works Committee, at least on temporary basis, until such time that we would get a new Public Works Director, and then we would relook at that, to see if it has benefits. Perhaps the new Director might appreciate having some input while they're getting acclimated to the job, so, that's the, the essence of it.
Any other comments, or, Paul, did you wanna make a motion, or? I mean, I know we did discuss this at the last meeting, and I just didn't know if we wanted to have any further discussion before we...
I guess the, I guess the, what's still up in the air is if this would just be Alderman, or if this would still have, if this would have at-large input, the way you had envisioned it, Mayor, so, I think that question needs to be answered first.
Okay, okay, yeah, go ahead, Scott.
I guess initially, I thought the same as Paul, but now, my question would be, we have to have a, somewhat of a head of this committee, which usually was John, our Public Works Director, now, with everyone wearing part of John's hat, I guess I don't know if it's the proper time to give him another extra burden right now, as far as having to hold a meeting, I guess that would be my thinking. Now, I like the thought of the committee, but maybe after we do get a Public Works Director, then we can, we actually have a, someone there running the meeting, I'm not so sure who would wanna do that with all their other duties, so I guess, Paul, I'm kind of thinking a little bit opposite of you, as far as the timing.
Okay, anybody else, council members? Steve, go ahead.
I, I agree with Paul, but I really think some of the council people should be in there to help. Everybody else has a committee that has council business except Public Works, so I think we should ask them out some...
Good. Dave?
I agree more with Scott on the fact that unless you have somebody there that really knows ins and outs of it, the rest of us would just be spinning their wheels in mud, I think, without really great knowledge of behind-the-scenes stuff. There is somebody like that, but I think a temporary committee is fine with me, but...
Okay. Other comments? Henry, go ahead.
Yeah, I know, to John's credit, you knew that, you saw the last three council meetings of his tenure here, he took on about six months' worth of work. Significant issues with our sewer use ordinance, the MOM, Maintenance Manual for our sewer collection system, we put the, the, those projects together and bid, and the equipment were bid. I, unless I'm wrong, I think we're kinda in more of a routine sort of maintenance kind of day-to-day stuff, and the bigger projects, he kinda led and got us to completion, and don't forget, and you're gonna hear a little bit later, we do have some outside consultants, you know, helping us out with project review, and, you know, and that kind of thing, so that expertise is there to come to you when and if projects require it, and actions require it, and again, you know, we don't know the, how the process will lay out, but we hope by the end of summer, someone will be on board, so the window is pretty tight, assuming we, we can find a person, so...
So, in a nutshell, Henry, what you're saying is you don't think it's necessary at this time?
Well, I, obviously, you know, I have to defer to, to the council and what you wanna do, but I think we've got some really strong division heads, and, and they're gonna come to us, come to me, come to you guys, when we need some action, and we've got some professionals behind us, that we've had in the past when John was here, too, you know, cause, you know, we have to bring on expertise from, from time to time, so, I kinda think it has a lot more merit, once your new person gets on board, probably, than now.
Right, that would be my thinking.
Okay, any other council members? Do we have a motion?
I think I would probably decline the motion at this time, in lieu of what I've heard.
Okay.
Maybe we could look at this again in a few months.
Okay, anybody else would like to make a motion? If not hearing a motion, we'll move on to the next item, which is ordinance number 0415, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the City Wopaka Zoney Ordinance, and this is our second reading, Brennan, you wanna just in a nutshell here, explain what we're doing here?
Sure. A couple years ago, the city worked on an oversized garage ordinance that, over the past year, year and a half, we've had some individuals come forward, questions, concerns have raised regarding some of the aesthetic qualities, and just the requirements that were being proposed on some oversized garages, and we more recently have had some requests for just expansions of existing residential character garages. The ordinance that's in front of you this evening is all-encompassing for our one and our two properties, we took the comments and considerations that I've received from individuals I have approached myself, or the Planning Commission, and in working with the Planning Commission crafted the ordinance, and that's in front of you guys tonight, to establish, you know, guidelines and baselines for garages within the R1 and R2 area, based upon acreage within the community. We're still allowing oversized garages, and when we're talking oversized garages, we're talking anything pretty much over 1,008 square feet, up to about 1,800 square feet, we had a couple of those, but the garages that are over 1,008 square feet are gonna be subject to a special use permit through the Planning Commission and Common Council for consideration, that will provide the opportunity for the Planning Commission to weigh in on the design, character, and materials for those oversized garages.
Okay, and again, this went through City Planning Commission, and Planning Commission did recommend this to the City Council, and this is the second reading of that. Anybody wanna make any comments or a motion?
I'd move to approve ordinance number 04-15.
Second?
Motion by Mayo, second by Olson, that we approve of ordinance number 0415, this is an ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the Wopaka City Zoning Ordinance. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczanski?
Aye.
And Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you Brennan, for your work on this. It was a process, but I think we got a good process, we got some good public input, thank you for that, and I think we have a good ordinance here. Okay, let's move on then to new business, we have a request from the Wopaka Community Arts Board for its 5th Annual Arts on the Square Festival, which is going to be held on August 14th and 15th, they're asking to use the City Hall grounds, including the parking lot and bandstand, and street closures, I see Barcy's here tonight, so, Barcy, just give your name and address for the record, please.
Barcy Reynolds, 407 Jefferson Street.
Thanks, Barcy, just, real quick, just explain to us what's going on.
Okay, it's the 9th Annual Arts on the Square, believe it or not, time flies. It's a two-day, actually, it's gonna be a three-day festival this year, I think the retailers are planning a bunch of events on Thursday, into Thursday evening, and then Friday, we have a national act coming for a band for the Friday Night Street Dance, which is gonna be totally awesome, they're called Davina and the Vagabonds, we have an anonymous donor that's putting up all the money, plus some local fundraising. Saturday is gonna be artists, music, there's three stages, this mic sucks.
You can't say that.
Sorry, strike that from the record. It's feeding back. We have the three tents with the musical acts, plus we have a fourth tent, and this is kinda bizarre, I met this, I met this guy in the subway in New York City, visiting my son, he's a poet, he does poetry on demand, and he's like this really awesome guy, and he's really, just this really wonderful compassionate person, and he just happens to be crossing the country in August, on his way back to New York from San Diego, cause he spends half the year in New York and half the year in San Diego, so he's gonna come up, and he's gonna meet up with the, the high school group, the Dead Poets Society, and work on them with some poetry, and there's gonna be a whole poetry tent with a bunch of poets, and a poetry workshop, and a poetry community art project, so it's, that's our fourth entertainment tent this year, so it's gonna be a little bit more going on this year than in years past. We've got the 40 juried artists, we have some other kinda crazy things that I'm not gonna... reveal right now, um, just to kinda keep the suspense going, but, um, we need to have the streets closed again for this. So, it's the Fulton Street from Main Street to Jefferson, and then, um, behind the library, that whole parking lot area, um, Jefferson Street for that one block, and then Union Street from Jefferson to Main. So, no additional street closures required for this fantastic event.
All right. And, uh, no other requests, uh, of the city besides that?
No, um, we'll be doing our annual request for the beer license, but that's a separate issue, and we'll just deal with that in whatever process that needs.
Okay. Awesome. Marcy?
So... Any questions?
Uh, we'd be looking for a motion then to approve the street closures for this, uh, very fun event that they have.
I'd move to approve.
Second?
We have a motion by Keeland, second by Hackett, that we approve of the Opaquac Community Arts Board request to, uh, close the streets, uh, and you heard Marcy's request for East Fulton Street and, uh, Union Street as well as part of Jefferson Street. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. Okay, next we have Engineering. Good luck, Marcy. I'm sure we'll see you in the next couple of meetings yet, too.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, Engineering Contract for the Water Main Improvements. Uh, this, uh, is Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my, uh, item starts on page 232 of your packet. There's a cover memo, a couple, uh, aerials, and Omni's, uh, proposed contract. I do have Phil Ramlet. He is in the audience. Phil is our Omni representative, if you have any specific questions. But if you remember back, uh, at the April 21st meeting, John Edelbeck did give a presentation on our water system, and has proposed that we move forward with the engineering to, uh, make these improvements. One project would be, uh, to loop our system out by the Highway 54, um, Highway 20, uh, Highway 54, Highway, uh, US 10 interchange along Fulton Street, and then looping the system, um, behind Kmart. Uh, this would, uh, help our reliability and, uh, improve the system a great deal. Uh, the cost of the proposal is, um, eighteen thousand four hundred forty dollars to, uh, design, uh, both projects. Uh, there are some easement requirements, possibly up to eight, four for each project. It'll just depend on, on alignments, and we won't know for sure, but that would be in addition. So, I guess the maximum cost would, could be up to twenty-six thousand, uh, four hundred and forty dollars. Um, I don't know if you have any questions on it. You can see the, from the aerials, kinda the tentative alignments, but that, again, they have to be designed. Uh, the idea is to design the, uh, projects this year and bid them out next, next year. And then next year, I'm assuming there would be some construction staking and project, you know, oversight, uh, agreement that would come forward later. Obviously, our new DPW would manage these projects and, and bring them through to conclusion. Uh, I don't know if you have any questions. Uh, this is a pretty straightforward contract. You've seen the, a dozen of these through the years, uh, or more. Uh, so, I don't know if you have any questions for Phil on the project?
Let me just ask one, the, the one closest to town. That has no effect on the Piattar story up there?
No. If you remember that line, uh, that 10-inch line, kinda in the old alignment of, uh, Highland, or...
Little Crest.
Highland. Why call it Highland Drive? Um, it's still there, and, uh, with staff's help, we were able to design kind of a footprint of a, of another building that could be built without encroaching on that line. So, no, it doesn't affect that at all.
Okay. Phil, anything you, you drove over here, you got anything to add to this or anything? I mean...
Well, the only thing I was gonna say for the forensics teacher, you know, when I took forensics in high school, they always said the first thing you do is take a look at the Gettysburg Address and kinda tell your comments about that length of time. So, that was the only thing I thought.
Wow. Wow. Uh, thanks. Uh, did, remember that this, uh, contract that we will be entering into, if you agree to this, is, uh, the water utilities. So, this is, uh, will not be coming out of the general fund, but it will actually be coming out of the Water Utility Fund, and, uh, I think the motion should say that not to exceed, if you're okay with that, of twenty-six thousand four hundred and forty dollars.
That's right, 'cause the final alignment, Mayor, uh, would dictate then the type of, how many easements that we would need for the project.
Okay. Good. Anybody that would like to make that motion?
I'll make that into a motion.
Motion by Whitman.
Second.
Second by Pachatsky, that we approve of the Engineering Contract with Omni and Associates for the Water Main Improvement at a cost not to exceed twenty-six thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Scott Pachatsky.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
And Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Phil. All right, next we have Sewer Service Charge Concern. We have a resident that, uh, does, uh, pay water and sewer. His name is Shannon Haskell. Shannon, I assume is here. If you would, just step up to the podium. Uh, let me set this up real quick here. Uh, council, you, in your packet, starting on page 247, you got the information, but then Shannon, uh, as he said in his, uh, uh, email, he had talked to older person, Keeland, and then, uh, had rewritten it with some changes in there and so on, and Sandy did put that on your desk, as well as she did send you an email, um, yesterday, I think it was, or Friday?
Probably on Friday.
Or today? Or was it this? Okay. It time spreads. So, Shannon, we've all had this in our packet, had a pretty good chance to, to read it, so if you don't mind, just, uh, give us a brief summary of what you're requesting here and...
Gotcha. Well, I apologize for the last-minute changes and stuff on that, so...
Okay.
All right, well, just some background. I live at 1025 Riverside Drive. It's an apartment complex with four bedroom, or four one-bedroom apartments, and, uh, this issue concerns me as well as the three others that live in the building. Now, I started paying for water and sewer around November of 2014, and I noticed that my monthly bill seemed a little high. And as I began to do some digging, I narrowed it down to a charge called the Sewer Service Charge, which is a fixed charge each month of twenty-four dollars and twenty-one cents, not to be confused with the volume charge, and that, that's the amount that we're charged for the volume of sewage that leaves the, the residence. Now, the Sewer Service Charge deals with basically three things. Paying off the debt accumulated by putting in the current sewer system, as well as the lift stations, creating a fund to replace the sewer system, the lift stations, and the treatment plant as they get old, and the property liability insurance. Now, the Sewer Service Charge is created by the city to ensure that everyone pays their fair share, to help pay off this debt, to save for future replacements, and the property liability insurance. Now, according to the municipal code, um, that if there's any discrepancies with this charge, then the city has the ability to make those type of adjustments. Now, the Sewer Service Charge is a fixed monthly charge determined by the diameter of the meter needed to service the building. So, for example, a five-eighths or a three-eighth inch meter would be twenty-four twenty-one for the whole building, and that goes up to a six-inch meter, which is one thousand two hundred and eleven dollars, so... All right, so this is my concern. Now, I don't mind paying my fair share to help pay off the debt and the other things, but my concern is the building located on 1025 Riverside Drive is paying more than its fair share. So, I'm asking the city to listen closely to what I'm about to share, so you can clearly see the issue and make an informed decision about what I'm, about the concern. So, I'd like to share with you two scenarios. Now, the first scenario, the building on 1025 Riverside Drive can be operated, um, off one meter and has been for many years. With one meter, our fair share of the debt, future replacement fund, and property liability insurance would cost the building as a whole twenty-four dollars and twenty-one cents a month.
Shannon, let me, let me correct you real quick here.
Yes.
Uh, we did our own research here, and this never did have one meter?
Okay, that's what I was told, and then the landlord said he'd switched it over to four.
Okay. He paid for all four of the bills and then included it basically in your rent, but there's always been four meters to this problem.
Four meters there, okay. But it can be operated off one meter. I talked to John about that. So, it can operate off one meter. Okay, so I apologize for that. That's what I was told. So... All right, so it can operate off the one meter, which would be the twenty-four twenty-one per month. Now, that cost per the year would be two ninety fifty-two. If you spread that across 10 years, it's two thousand nine hundred and five dollars. Twenty years, it's five thousand eight hundred and four. Now, the second scenario is that we have the four meters on there. Okay? With the extra meters, what we're looking at paying as a building as a whole is ninety-six eighty-four per month. All right? For the year, it goes from two ninety to one thousand one hundred and sixty-two, a difference of nine hundred dollars. The cost over a 10-year period is eleven thousand six hundred and twenty, a difference of nine, of close to nine thousand, and if you look at over a 20-year period, we're looking at going from five thousand eight hundred and four dollars to twenty-three thousand, which is about seventeen thousand dollar difference. Now, most would agree that if you're going to pay more for something, there should be a logical reason to do that. If it can be operated off one meter, you know, we should be subject to the twenty-four twenty-one charge. So, there should, there ought to be some sort of causation. So, my question is, if it can operate off the one meter, you know, what items on the Sewer Service Charge, if you look at the former debt, future replacement fund, or the liability insurance, increases as a result of adding those three meters? Does that make sense? And if there is no increase, then would it be fair for the building on 1025 Riverside Drive to pay more than its fair share, paying nearly seventeen thousand dollars more over a 20-year period? So, I guess here's my proposal. I guess this is what I would suggest. As a meter, as mentioned above, the monthly fixed Sewer Service Charge is determined by the diameter of the meter needed to run the building. So, let's say our building only requires the three-fourth inch meter to run the building. So, if the city has determined that's our fair share of the debt, future fund and insurance, um, the building should never have to pay over the twenty-four twenty-one per month. So, the only way I think would be, make it to be fair, would be to determine the meter size, what meter size would be efficient for running that whole building, and run, and divide that by the number of meters used to service that apartment building. So, an example would be, if it only takes one meter to efficiently run our building, would be to take that twenty-four, twenty-one and divide it by the four meters. All right? Does that make sense? Because currently, our building's paying twenty-six eighty-four, which is equivalent to a building with a one-inch and one-half inch meter. So, just to give you an idea, you know, buildings that run off a one-inch, one-and-a-half inch meters are buildings such as car washes, you know, smaller manufacturing nursing homes. So, our building as a whole is paying as much as a car wash would pay for its, you know, part of the debt, part of the liability of that insurance, as well as the replacement. So, that's kinda what we're looking at. So, that's kinda the nuts and bolts. Does anybody have any questions? Does that make sense?
Mayor, um, is there an ordinance in place that requires every unit of an apartment building to have a separate water meter? Do you know?
Well, no, there isn't. Um, and...
So...
I mean, I don't, no, there isn't.
Okay, if there isn't, I, do we have jurisdiction here on this? I mean, Mr. Haskell's not the owner of the building. Shouldn't he be talking to the owner of the building? And if the owner, he can convince the owner of the building to go to one meter, then the owner can get together with his plumber and Mark Nolenberg, and they can make the conversion. I mean, I'm not sure what we are here to decide tonight. There's no ordinance involved here.
I think his request is a little bit different than that, Paul, but, yeah, I get your point. I mean, if, if you wanna go just back to one meter, uh, or go to a one-meter system, that can be done, uh, it certainly can be done. But I don't, Shannon, that, that's not your request, though. You're not requesting that it goes back to one.
Go back to one meter. No, I think the landlord does that because of past issues of people not paying, you know, on their debts. So, that way he can measure the proper amount and take them to court to get his fair amount of water back, which makes sense. It's the same way the utility runs. You know, we run a meter to each particular house. If someone doesn't pay their bills, you know, we cut out their water, or we take them to court, or whatever the process is to get that money. The landlord's doing the same thing the utility is doing, so it wouldn't be fair to ask him to do anything different. So, I guess what I'm proposing is that, as the ordinance, that we would look at the type of meter that would run the building. So, our building would, could be running off a three, or three-fourths inch meter, meaning that our only obligation for the debt, for the replacement, as well as the insurance, would be twenty-four twenty-one as a building as a whole. So, what he does, he just takes that and he's dividing that by four. So, every time we add a meter, we double our responsibility to pay off...
So, you're saying you wanna have four meters on it, but only pay for one?
No, we're still be paying for one. It can run off the one meter, the twenty-four twenty-one. That's our obligation, according to the, the ordinance, is our obligation for that building. It's twenty-four twenty-one per month to help pay off the debt for the replacement fund, as well as the liability insurance.
So, you want to inactivate three of the meters and run off a one meter?
No, is to take whatever meter is efficient and divide that by the incremental meter that are going into the building. So, basically, we're just taking that twenty-four twenty-one, the meter that is efficient to run it, and then dividing that by the four meters. So, each building would pay six dollars and five cents.
So, essentially, you wanna have four meters and only pay for one?
No, we're still paying for the appropriate meter.
I, I think missed the point there on the volumetric charges now. With only a single meter, you can't equitably divide the usage between the four different apartments.
No, I wa, I wanna keep the three meters, the four meters on there. It's just divide that cost up between the four apartments.
He's just, yeah. I mean, again, he's, he's, he's not asking that it go from four meters to one meter, and he's just asking that the price be divided between four, because it's one address. It's one property. That's what he's asking for.
'Cause you can see the incremental. I guess my question would be, you know, by adding the charges, what effect does that have, you know, on the debt, the liability, as well as the, the insurance, as well as the replacement fund? You know, 'cause every time we add a meter, we're increasing that, or doubling that. So, now we're four, three or four times the amount that we originally are obligated to pay if we just had the one meter. And you can see the cost variation. Over a 20-year period, we're paying seventeen thousand dollars more than is required. So, if you look at the price we pay as a whole as a building, we're paying ninety-six dollars, which is equivalent to a one-and-a-half meter, which is used by car washes, nursing homes, and small manufacturing. That's what, that's what we're paying currently by having the four meters. By adding the meters, you're not adding any extra, you're not adding anything to the debt. You're not adding anything to the replacement fund or the liability insurance. So, I'm just asking that, as a building, that we pay our fair share, which I have no problem doing. Does that make sense?
Paul Hagan.
Um, if you, in, in a building of multiple-unit building, each person who has a landline for a telephone pays a customer fee. Each person who has natural gas pays an individual fee. Each person who pays electric has, has a type of base fee that they pay, just like I have at my house. So, I mean, what you're, what you're asking to do really is, is, is bucking a, a, a well-established system here of how utilities charge their customers. Um, the, the, the logic of it, you know, might be something that, that you can defend, but the whole sys, the whole system is, is based on each individual consumer paying a type of fee that, um, supports that type of utility.
Like it was mentioned, though, we could go back to one meter, and the building as a whole is only gonna be paying twenty-four twenty-one.
And the, and the, and the, the building, the building owner could do that.
Mm-hmm. But our obligation goes three times the amount if we add the three extra meters. And that was my point. You know, how does that affect the debt and the liability and the service charge? You know, what changes that enforces us to pay three times the amount we were paying before? So, and that was, that's why I suggested that, that you look at what meter officially runs the building and divide that by the number of apartments or meters that service that building.
Okay. Henry, you had?
Well, I, I think the twenty-four twenty-one is sort of our one residential unit. The way we, and Mr. Taran Knoll's here, who helped us devise our, our usage, user fee system, that's basically a residential unit, and you have basically four residences in there. So, I think that's sort of maybe the confusion or the rub. Um, now, one meter versus four, but the twenty-four twenty-one is based on all these individual residential units, and I think that's why, what that's devised from. Beyond that, there's probably a lot more to the methodology, if you had any more questions, than, than I can answer.
Anybody have any questions? Any other comments? Chuck, go ahead.
Well, I would presume this is not the only building like this in the city. Are there other apartment buildings?
Oh, sure, there are.
You know, Mark's not here. I don't know, Roger, there's, has to be some other ones that are like this, so it would be more of an impact than just this one building on the city's side, so...
Absolutely. Right. I, I, yeah, I mean, uh, if we were... Right, I, I, yeah, I mean, uh, if we re, if we think it's fair and we reduce his cost here, it doesn't reduce the city's cost.
Right.
So, it's going to be passed on to other customers, obviously. And the more people that fit into this, the more we're going to have to raise other people's costs to make sure that, uh, this, this fee gets covered.
Well, and don't forget, each of those meters that you would still leave in your building has a cost itself. It's not insignificant.
Well, the, most of the cost goes towards your volume charge. Now, far as the sewer service charge, there's only three, three things to consider. It's the debt that we have for putting in our current sewer system, we're paying that off. We have a replacement fund that we're initiating, as well as the liability insurance that they have. So, those are only three things that are considered in the sewer service charge. Everything else is considered under your volume charge. So, really, by adding three meters, you're not changing the debt, you're not changing the replacement fund, you're not changing any liability insurance, you're not doing anything other than our building now is paying three times the amount it did before. And that was kind of my thing, what is our fair amount? And I don't mind paying my fair amount, but I feel like we're paying three times the amount we're supposed to be paying for that building.
Mayor, um, you bring up the issue of fairness. What about the individual in a house that only uses half the capacity of their three-quarter inch meter? Should they pay half the service fee?
It would, it would be the same. I mean, because we could go right now, I can, we can go there, and we can change the meters back to one meter, and our only obligation for the insurance, as well as the liability insurance and the debt, would be 24-21.
But you're going to have four meters, you're saying you essentially use one quarter of its capacity, so you should pay one quarter?
We could, we could go down to one meter at that building.
That's what I suggest you do.
Well, it, it'd be an option. But that's not my call. And my call is just to figure out, you know, what is, what is the fair amount for that building to pay?
Taren, uh, do you want to use a microphone, or you want to just stand right up there? Okay. Just give your name, Taren, so for council members that do not know you.
Taren Knoll, Kemfer and Associates, Oconom Falls, Wisconsin. We, we initially did the major user charge creation back in 1995. At that time, it was strictly regulated by DNR on how to get equitable distribution of costs. And if you look throughout Wisconsin, except for a few minor cases, maybe in very small communities, much smaller than Wapaka, everybody uses the number of meters that a customer's have to distribute the fixed costs. At the time, we created your user charge system back in 95, and since that time, John had us updated about three times, I believe, in that, since that time. We've stayed with that methodology. It's sound, and if you go away, if you get, allow exemptions for certain users, you better make the exemptions fair across the board for every user in the system. And, uh, the, the meter char, uh, uh, the me, the use of meters for fixed charges can be challenged, just like this, your alderman said, about someone who uses half. We have a, I have a resident down in, by Fond du Lac that uses about 3,000 gallons a year. Normally, the normal residential customer uses about 40,000. This woman uses about 3,000 a year. Does she get a break on a three-quarter inch meter? No. Or a five-eighths inch meter? No. She pays the, the fixed charge that just is, you, almost universally accepted. The only time you don't have meters is if you have a, a community without water. And then you go to equivalent housing units. So, how many equivalent housing units are in a four-apartment building? Normally, you'd say four. So, you know, the whole, uh, the whole thing, you know, and the, the thought that he had about the, uh, having one meter, and it's going to be $21, just doesn't hold weight unless your water department decides that a three-quarter inch meter can serve four apartments, which I don't think that they will. The AWWA has a set manual on sizing meters and services to, to properties, and it's all based on fixtures and things like that. And I can leave a copy of that with Henry, uh, to, uh, you know, go over with you, maybe when you have time. I could talk about user charges for two hours, but you don't want that, so. I, I, I feel that you have a fair system. PSC was contacted, as I indicated in the letter to you, or to Henry. And PSC said, hey, just if the user charges are fair, equitable, that you're not discriminating against any user, they don't have any problem at all with it. I went through the, our methodology that we use, which they see used throughout the Wisconsin, you know, they don't, they, they don't have any issues with it. So, um, if you want to change anything, you can, but you got to make it universal, and not just for one user out in the, and give them preferential treatment. Can't do that. And if you do that, you'll probably have 99.99% of your users in the system challenge it, because they aren't going to be treated fairly then. Everyone uses a certain amount of water, and the, the use of the meters has just been universally accepted for distribution of that cost. It's unfair, it could be considered unfair for certain users, but universally, you got to look at the, the broad picture of it. And the distribution by, uh, meter size and numbers is appropriate to use.
Dave, you had, thank you, Taren. Dave, did you have anything, or?
I don't think there's really much to add. From my viewpoint, uh, seems like it's universal across Wisconsin. I think we would open up a big can of worms. Maybe every duplex would then come in and, not one line, and I think it would be a real problem.
Okay. Since there, there is a request, and it is on the agenda, I would ask that we make a motion either in the affirmative or in the negative, uh, on this request from Mr. Haskell.
I'll make a motion, we deny the request.
Second.
We have a motion by Hackett, second by Hagan, that we deny the request for the change of sewer rate charges on the, based on the meters, on the property. Any discussion?
I just have one question. Does Mr. Haskell have a copy of this letter that's in our package?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other discussion? If not, Sandy, we'll call it over.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
And Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay. Next, we'll move on then to the recommendations, uh, to move Kathy Kaza from our Finance Director Treasurer from her probationary status to full-time regular employment status. Henry, you want to get us up to date on that?
Yeah, I'm trying to find, uh, the number here, I'm sorry.
253.
Okay, 253. Uh, my memo outlines it. Oh, God, let me get here. Thank you. Yeah, this is my memo recommending that we move our Finance Director from our probationary status to full-time regular, uh, status. I put the rationale, uh, in, in there. I, I believe that Kathy's bringing a lot of experience and knowledge and some of her network to bear for us. You just heard in her report today, being able to access a connection to help us with a cash flow statement, development of cash flow statement using somebody else's intern. So, I think these are just the kinds of things that she does in approaching her job. I can tell you that there's been some process improvements in our area that have been well-received. I think our, our folks that report to her think a lot of her. You know, she's learning our culture. We play nice up here, we're not so contra, maybe confrontational as maybe you're used to, but, uh, we, uh, we are all integrating and getting, uh, used to working with her, and I think she brings a lot to, uh, the table. And, uh, in her short time, you've seen some fruits of her, her labor. So, I, I, I don't hesitate recommending her to full-time regular status, is how it's termed in our handbook. And, uh, as she was in probation, um, she did not receive the pay increase that, uh, the other employees received in January. So, I would recommend that she be eligible for that, you know, on approval of this today. I would not be retroactive back to January 1, but want the day of her going to regular status. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayo, second by Keeland, that we approve of, uh, moving our Finance Director, Kathy Kaza, from, uh, probationary status to full-time, uh, employment status effective, May 19th? Today. Okay. Thanks, Sandy. Uh, and also, give her the cost of living increase 2.5%. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, next, we have a request by the Wapaka Area Chamber of Commerce for, uh, street closures for Strawberry Fest on June 19th and 20th, 2015, and then also for the Hometown Days on July 4th, 2015. Mitch? Again, just give us your name and who you're representing, Mitch, for...
Okay, Mitch Swenson from the Wapaka Area Chamber of Commerce. We would like to request, uh, the use of the city square grounds and surrounding streets. And, uh, this request is being submitted following the guidelines set by the City Council at the April 19th, 1994 Council Meeting, for the two events, Strawberry Fest Friday through Saturday, June 19th through the 20th, and Hometown Day, Saturday, July 4th, 2015. And for Strawberry Fest, the request is the block of Main Street from Fulton to Granite Streets is needed Saturday, the block of Fulton Street from Main Street to Jefferson Streets, and the city library, uh, parking lot will be needed Friday through Saturday. Additionally, for, uh, Hometown Day, uh, we would like permission to once again close County Cave from the cemetery to the recycling center, uh, in the evening for the fireworks. The road, uh, will be closed to pedestrian traffic to leave a clear path for emergency vehicles. And, uh, a certificate of, of insurance would be coming to the city from Johnson Insurance Agency, uh, in the near future.
Okay, and this is not any different than your request in the past? And Mitch, as in the past, too, you, uh, the chamber has, uh, sent out a letter to the business owners that has been, that's affected by these closures and so on? Do you plan on doing that again this year?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions of Mitch?
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
Since this is County Cave, do we, is, is, do you need county permission, too, or?
I was going to bring that up, Paul. It's not County Cave anymore.
Oh, okay, I'm just seeing what he, what he has.
Yeah, County Cave actually is. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, I was going to ask if we had to change that, so.
Yeah.
Seems that's not County Cave there anymore.
Yeah, it's actually, what, Lakeside Parkway?
Lakeside Parkway.
Something like that.
Okay, okay. I was wondering about that.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I thought the same thing. And then, do you want to, do you want to put in there anything about, since the cemetery is pretty much the entire, like, to begin, the cemetery near Lake Street, or, I mean, or do we, is that sufficient?
I think we...
We all know what, what they mean.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're okay on that.
Call me too literal.
Anybody, any other comments? Motion? Hope to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Olson, second by Hagan, that we approve of the, uh, request from the Chamber of Commerce for street closures for Hometown Days on July 4th, and then also Strawberry Fest on June 19th through the 20th. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
Thank you.
Mitch, thank you, good luck. All right, uh, next, we have approve, uh, upgrade to financial software. Kathy, you're going to earn that raise right now, yeah?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I also have, and, uh, to help in the presentation, um, which will be short, Mike Lesh from Civic Software. I had him come up, just in case any of the council members had any questions regarding, um, the agreement that, um, was provided. The city's software is the older version of, um, of financial software that really limits the procedural efficiencies that can be, um, garnered with, uh, upgrade in the financial software. In my past experience, uh, which was like three years ago, I went out for RFP for financial software, uh, and it ran about 150 to 500,000 dollars out there. And even talking to another vendor that would have provided us with a quote, um, she told us what we had budgeted would probably only buy us, um, our general ledger module only. So, it's, uh, very expensive, and it's a very, um, time-consuming, uh, change in the way we do, um, with financial reporting. So, um, the fiscal responsibility of my office was to look for a cheaper version that would fit within budget. And, uh, Civic Software has, uh, a upgraded version that runs on, uh, SQL Server, which is another operating, Microsoft operating, uh, system, and, uh, would provide, uh, with, budget, a, um, dashboard to department heads who would, um, be able to use, uh, the internet to see the status of their accounts, uh, employee information on payroll without having to call my office. It would also provide security by using usernames and passwords, which our current system does not, which would help in, um, protecting the database. It also, um, does, uh, better reporting in that, uh, there's a option in, that's included in the quote, to use Excel's, uh, worksheets that will automatically update that worksheet with the financial data that's in the system by just changing the date, uh, in this, in the, in the spreadsheet. So, um, part of my, um, ex, past experience has been, um, with Civic Software on the newer version, so, uh, we would, um, save time in training. My staff is currently, um, used to using the same platform. Um, the, the menus are the same, uh, there's just some more, um, functionality within the system. And, um, Civic has been gracious enough to, uh, give us a, uh, 50% discount on the license fees. They will also do a three-year no-interest financing option, uh, which would allow me to incorporate into the 2016, 17, and 18 budget, the general operating fund, um, portion of the licensing fees, and not have to go out and borrow for it. So, I'm bringing this forward from the fact that, uh, I would like to get on the schedule, which is filling up fast, uh, at the company, to, uh, start the implementation this year, with the funding to come from the utilities to start off with, and then, um, purchase the equipment and, uh, go forward with, uh, including it in the budget for, uh, the future years instead of borrowing. Save some money that way. Mike, do you want to add anything?
No, I, I think that you pretty much hit all the, hit all the topics. I don't know if there's any questions that you said then?
Let me, let me ask you one question, Mike. From, uh, from a council standpoint, and even the citizens that are watching us tonight, what does this do for us?
Well, ba, basically, one of the biggest things is, is going back to the risk assessment standards to take a look at, take a look at what the software can do in order to, uh, maintain security within the, within the financial system. I think Kathy alluded to this about username and passwords. Any type of, any type of transaction is done within the system, um, you have the ability now to be able to track who made that transaction, when it was made, what it was changed from and to, and, uh, date stamped also. Um, that's, that's some of the functionality within the software.
Okay, good. Eric?
How old is the current system that we use, and how long can we expect to use this system?
Yeah, the current system that you guys are on right now was written in 99. So, and I think you guys came on board pretty close right after that onto the classic version. It's written in access, and that's kind of the reason why we're migrating people over to our SQL version, is just because it's an access version of product. We just can't do any more programming to enhance the capabilities in the access version. So, we have switched platforms, and now we're working on the SQL version. So, and, oh, and to answer your question about how long in the foreseeable future can you be utilizing this program? This program has now been in place for approximately five years total. The last three years has been, we've finally got all the modules over to the clarity version. You won't only be getting access to this version, but then also our next version, which is in development. So, so I, you never can tell with software, but I, I have a strong, strong peace of mind thinking that you'd get at least eight, 10 years out of it, if not more.
Could you speak to some of the, some of the efficiencies that we might be gaining by doing this?
Definitely, definitely. Kathy talked about the My Viewpoint tool. On the My Viewpoint tool for the department heads, they can actually take a look at their real-time budget to actual, so they get actual up-to-date numbers within that product. They can take a look and, and see their vendors that they've made payments to, see if checks have cleared for those particular vendors like that without, at a snap of a finger, without having to call Kathy and, and take her off of whatever she's doing at that point in time to answer those questions. On top of that, the My, the My Excel tool that, that Kathy would be utilizing for the general ledger, and that comes payable to direct connect from, from Excel into, into the general ledger database, or the AP database, or the payroll database. And what that allows her to do is to be able to build her spreadsheets right within, within Excel that she's probably utilizing right now. And instead of having to rekey that information, she's just able to change dates, and all that information will actually pull into the system. And on top of that, budget, budgets, entering in budgets, you can just enter it in right from Excel and import it right into the system rather than rekeying it. So, those are some of the, some of the added functionalities.
I don't even know if the old software offers this, but does, does the new software also have an audit trail for you two to, to follow?
It, it does. It does have an audit trail. On top of that, too, some of the other efficiencies that I didn't, we didn't talk about was electronic steps checklist for cross-training within, within the city, too, is each module, you can have a steps checklist and things that need to be done on a daily, weekly, and monthly basis. In the old access system, all you had was a, was a sheet, just a Word document or a PDF that you could look at, go down the line, see what you had to do next, didn't know where to go in the software. This one is actually hyperlinked right from that checklist, so you, you see what you've done in the past, you can click on the next item to be done, it'll take you right to that point in the software. If, for some reason Kathy was out for a couple days, and, and, or her payroll person was out for a couple days, and, and the payroll person needed to let the next person know where, where she left off, she could just take that step checklist, mark off the things that she did do, email it on to Kathy, and then Kathy could just jump in, and then click on the next items and take her right to that point in the software. She doesn't have to know exactly, exactly how to get around in the software, but she just needs to be able to cook the buttons and get, get to the point that she needs to be.
Another audit feature that's available is, is that if somebody goes in and changes a employee's record, an email can get sent to me saying so-and-so went and changed that rate, or that person's address, or that social security number within that. The nice thing about the security is it's, it's menu-driven, and even goes so that if I had a person in my office that can look at something but can't change anything, I can have them do that, or they could just run a report. The nice thing with the dashboard is that the departments can run their reports and set them up. They can also have spreadsheets that can update them, so they can see how much overtime is being spent within their department, how much payroll, payroll is costing them at a certain time, what the, much vacation time, sick leave time is available to each employee. We can even get it to that point where if we needed to, we could print out a secondary, second check stub for an employee who's lost it. So, it's very functional, very efficient. Definitely get rid of our handwritten cash receipts within our department, and some of the other redundancies that we're doing right now. So, I think going for, it's a, it's a good step going forward to provide efficiencies and within budget.
Yeah, I think we're gonna see, and, and I talked to Kathy quite a bit about this too, but I think you're gonna see too, even at the budget process, this is gonna be part of what's gonna help us to be a little bit more interactive with our budget, too, where if there's a line item that's going to be changed, Kathy is almost gonna immediately be able to tell us what the bottom line and what that change will be. And part of this is being able to use this software to get us to that point, so.
Well, and the nice thing too is, is that with my, with my viewpoint, the departments will be able to enter their line item right into the software, I won't react or re-enter it. So, that's, there's efficiencies there.
Awesome.
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the upgrade to financial software.
Okay. Let me read what we have here, and, and this is what your motion is, to make sure, okay, Paul? Move by mail, second by Olson, that the council approved the upgrade to the city financial software with Civic Systems in the amount of $46,700 to be paid over three years with no interest being charged, and a staff training or equipment in the amount of $13,300 for total cost not to exceed $60,000, which the funding will come from the capital projects, water to utility, and, and also the sewer utility funds. Does that make sense? Okay? Eric, you okay with that? All right. Any further discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Alan Kealan?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
And Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate you coming in. Next, we're going to go, this is still Kathy here, approval of a revised employment travel policy.
Thank you, Mayor. The travel policy that is currently in the municipal code and in the employee handbook and administrative supplement is very broad, and I've brought some train, some travel policy from my previous employer, who I've taken from the city of Green Bay, which is one of my contacts. So, I've requesting that it'll give the policy that is in the handbook and simplify, will be simplifying the municipal code if the policy's changed, to allow for more specifics as to how employees travel and how the reporting. I did receive Alderman Hackett's recommended changes in the forms, and those will be included in the final documents as far as formatting. And it just makes a standardization for all of the reporting. Right now, I'm getting different reports from the library for travel, the police department, rec department, and I think that a standardized policy that encompasses the whole city would be more efficient and have better guidelines. By not putting a lot of the language within the ordinance, it gives the council the ability to change the policy instead of having to rewrite the ordinance and publish it and everything else. So, it's, it's changing more to a generalized statement in the municipal code and the travel policy being more dynamic and versus in the employee policy handbook.
And you see this as an annual approval of this policy?
No, I think if anything, we'll probably just bring back any changes, like to the IRS rate of pay, of mileage, if, depending on what that is, if that's the case, or if there comes to a point where we see that there's a need to tighten up some of the travel going forward due to budget, kind of look at that. But I wouldn't say, it's a very comprehensive policy in, in regards to employee travel and how we reimburse the employees for that travel.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Can, I, you were just short on specifics for me.
Okay.
I, I heard dynamic, I heard a lot of generalizations. I didn't hear a lot of specifics as to why we need to do this, other than standardization, standardization of forms.
Well, there's nothing in your ordinance, nor in your employee handbook, in that, in following how hours of work when somebody travels, this is included in this policy? So, if somebody is under FLSA, the, you would have them, if they traveled during their work hours or after their hours, have a reason why you would pay them, why you wouldn't pay them. You also have, whether, in there, whether or not that, sorry, that when you're traveling with your spouse or your family, that the city will not pay any of those costs. There's a code of conduct and procedures in, in reporting back with a travel authorization prior to traveling, and then the receipts and the report being filled out with a specific report form to the finance department for approval. So, I think it's the standardization and some of the other language in, you know, that you can only use coach or economy fares. It, it gets into more specifics than what the ordinance did in the handbook.
Okay. Now, my question would be, I guess, first of all, to you, Tim. Is this, is this being, is this something that the police commission would approve, in your opinion? Because we're, because what we're doing is, and the library also, I mean, there, that this is something that would be able to be applied to them without their approval?
Well, everything with us, with optional powers, training, expenses, travel, was approved by them. So, we would just be apparently just using this form, and the dollar amounts set forward.
Okay. Did you get input into this?
Yeah, this had been going on. There was one recommendation regarding internet access at training sites that was changed. But as far as us, you know, the approval process doesn't really apply because we're independent, and I suspect that the library would be the same. We would just be utilizing, to my understanding, we would just be utilizing this electronic form that I'm looking at that's included in the packet.
There were some changes that needed to be made because it was not accurate anymore either, and one of them that, that Kathy brought up too was, is that the mileage rate would be set by the finance committee each year? Well, we don't have a finance committee. So, obviously, there's some changes. That's just one example of, of a change that needed to be made.
Overall, I'm supportive of what, what's being proposed here, but I look at the form, and it requires three approvals, which to me, I think is a little bit bureaucratic. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, there, it would be the employee, and then department head.
And city administrator, clerk, and finance director. So, that's three approvals. I think that's overkill.
Well, I, I think I made that form generic in that department heads have to have the city administrator, but if it was a regular employee, they would only need to have their supervisor, and then I usually sign all of the bills that are, that come to me for, for payment. So, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the city administrator, only on the department heads, just like the city administrator has the mayor approve his travel. So, if I, you know, I could, it's an electronic form, I can change and make it, you know, whatever, easier, but I just thought I incorporated all the signatures that needed to be done for the majority of the employees.
The only, and I, I guess I'm okay with it if, if the majority is okay with this too, but the only thing that I noticed that will be quite a bit different will be, the mileage rate will be set by the Internal Revenue Service if we accept this, which is okay. I mean, you cannot go above what the IRS's rate is, but you can always go less than that if you want to. So, if council wants the ability to pay less than the IRS rate, this would be the time to discuss that. If you're okay with the, whatever the Internal Revenue Service applies for that amount, then we would leave as is. I mean, everything else that's in here, council decides on a budget, budgetary year, so.
Yeah, the IRS rate is pretty standard with employers. See it all over the place, and I'd...
It's pretty standard with, with big business.
Well...
All right, yeah, I mean, I, again, I, being in a small community and having small businesses, I, I see that rate is, is a lot less than, than the allowable IRS rate, and that's the only reason I bring it up. But again, I'm okay with it if you want to do that, I just want you to understand that you're, you're basing it on, on what the IRS is giving for the rate.
What is our current rate now?
It went to, is it 58 and a half?
It's 57 and a half.
57 and a half cents.
Wasn't the IRS around 56?
No, no, no.
That's how much the IRS rate is.
What is, what is our?
Right.
We've been going by the IRS even though it doesn't, yeah.
But don't department heads get a mileage allowance? Is that in addition to, or instead of?
That's a dollar amount, though.
Right, but, but it's a fixed amount, I understand that, but is it in addition to or instead of the IRS reimbursement?
It would be instead of the IRS reimbursement if you were given a stipend for mileage.
And are we going to continue that for department heads? I guess that's a question I would have, too.
Well, I think the department heads choose not to be accountable for their, well, I hate to say that, but this is how the IRS would say it. So, it's included in their income.
Right. If they were given a stipend, it's included in their income.
Right.
If this is, this is, if you report it on this form, it's a reimbursement of expense, so this is not reported to the, on your W2s.
Our, our policy is, is a stipend covers travel and around the city and within Wapaka County. If you're traveling outside the county to day meeting or whatever, then that's when this policy kicks in.
It also does, in the policy, recommend using city vehicles if, for travel, to avoid the cost.
Okay. Again, I think it's a, it's a step up from where we're at. Some of this stuff, in my mind, is, is, you shouldn't have to be concerned about, if you take your spouse, you shouldn't have the, enter that amount, and I don't know that any of our employees would do that, but it's, it's defined here. So, I, I think all of those things are good. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. So. What do you think? Motion?
I'll make this into a motion there.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by, again, I'm, I'm gonna hope that I know what your motion is. Your, a motion by Whitman, and a second by Kealan, that we approve of the revised employee travel policy as printed in your packet.
Yes.
Okay, Alan?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. All right, Josh, you gotta come out from behind the camera here. Renewal of the charter communications contract.
We met with our charter sales rep, I think, about a month ago, took over where we were with our service. We switched to charter, re-entered with an initial two-year contract, which has since expired, and we've been on a month-to-month agreement, which I've been comfortable with. We're not tied into anything long-term. And she, obviously, as a sales rep, encouraged us to enter into another multi-year deal. And she presented a two- and three-year option for us. The three-year option presented was knowing when they'd had a pricing advantage to make a change. And I'm kind of sensitive due to the whole AT&amp;T issue getting into long-term contract and getting tied into bad pricing down the road. And, you know, told her I wasn't interested in three-year deal. And she came back with significantly better pricing on doing a two-year deal, which I think is a pretty acceptable, pretty safe timeframe. For our internet service, Waupac Online, our price would be reduced $300 a month on this new contract. And for the City Hall Library Building phone service, our monthly expense would be reduced by $25. So I, recommendation for me is to enter into a two-year deal at these better rates and save some money. Any questions?
I'm concerned about the bad total bandwidth we have at 70 megabytes. We've had that for several years now. Are we, are we close to maxing out on that?
I anticipate probably late summer we'll be looking to bump that up. We're not quite there, but we're pretty close. And one of the nice things with the charter is they're, we met with them, they know our whole AT&amp;T situation. And if we may go up or down in speed anytime, they'll allow us to do that.
For additional charge?
Yeah. We'd pay more per month if we bump up to more speed, but it's, on the old contract, it was $10 per meg. So if we bumped up another 10 meg, that would add $100 to the contract. And I asked the sales rep, you know, I anticipate late summer we'll probably bump up to 80 at least. And, you know, due to the new contracts, you said we just submit to her and they'd work out a new agreement on that.
So that's what the, that's what the new rate would be, $10 per meg?
No, she couldn't guarantee that. We'd go to her, tell her the speed, and she'd come back with a updated amount. But since we're out of that initial contract, that $10 per meg isn't there anymore either.
Can we work that into this new contract, if it's a two-year agreement?
I can ask and see if she can define a rate to build into this. I can ask that, yeah.
Well, especially since you think it's going to be so short-term. I would think it'd be nice to know what that is.
Yeah, I can go back to her and request that. That's not a problem. And there's no time rush to sign this new agreement. We can just stay month-to-month. I just suspect if we wait too long, if this gets dragged out too long, that this pricing that she gave us may change. But I don't see any issue waiting another two weeks to bring something back.
The other question I have, Josh, is are there any other options besides charter?
AT&amp;T.
That's it? Oh, Lord.
So there is no other option?
This is pretty nice pricing, you know, getting it reduced by 300 bucks a month is a good spot to be for what we're getting.
I'm surprised it's not more of a reduction than that. When we went from AT&amp;T to charter, it was a massive reduction, and this is a slight reduction. I'm surprised at the timeline, that given that we, this has been over two years, I'm surprised that we don't get a whole lot more bandwidth for a whole lot less price as we did before. But possibly charter knows that our only other option is AT&amp;T, which we're not going to take, so that affects their offer.
You're reading my mind, Paul. I was just about to say the exact same thing. I mean, is it, I mean, is it possible to go back to them and say, you know, we want, we'll, we'll give you $1,700 a month, but we want that 80 meg right now for that price?
I can try.
You know, and you might be, you might be surprised at their response, because they, they really want you to sign that two-year agreement.
Yeah.
And if you say, yes, we'll do that, but you need to do this because that city council is cheap, then, you know, they may do it.
Well, and also get that additional per meg, in addition, you get that worked into.
Yeah. I can go back to her and, with this feedback, and see what it does, and see if we can get something better worked out. The other comment I made, she forgot to include our static, we've got two blocks of static IP addresses that are $100 a month each, and she forgot to include that in this initial contract, went back to her, said, hey, these are missing, I'll make sure this is correct for my presenting it, and reduced that bandwidth from 17 to 1500, add those two blocks on for 200 more. So, you know, I can try. I'll go back and try, but I think they were fair with the pricing. But, you know, it doesn't hurt to ask again.
And on the phone side, don't we, don't we really do have more options? $25 a month seems to be a little light on savings.
We were with AT&amp;T on phone, we switched to charter. We met with, who did we meet with a couple of years ago when we were evaluating this? We met with another company for, I'd have to go back and look, but there was a, another choice for that. I can, I've got that info somewhere, I can look that up and.
It would just seem, it would just seem like it, there might be more savings out there than 20, more than 25 bucks a month.
How many lines again was that, Josh?
Just a PRI and fiber, I think it's the equivalent of, I think you can have 23 phone calls going on at once, and we've got 100, 100 phone numbers that I can route to different extensions. So 23, equivalent to 23 lines coming in. And that includes 1,000 minutes of long distance per month.
I think it's a pretty good deal, Paul. But you can ask for more if you want.
I would do that.
I don't have, I don't have a lot of other vendors to pit against each other on this. I ran into Good Luck on the cell phone plan and the copiers we replaced when I had two, three companies to go against each other. But with AT&amp;T being the other big choice, it's kind of hard to pit a couple against each other to drive the pricing down.
Well, you know, maybe if you come back in a couple of weeks, maybe, who knows? At least it's worth asking.
Yeah, yeah. I can reach out to her and bring it back at the next meeting and see what we come up with, yeah.
Okay, so are we holding off on this then, until we find out? Yeah? All right, you got to come back next week from behind the camera for next month.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, next we have the 2015, 2016 farmer's market request for sustainable community initiative. Bonnie is here tonight, Bonnie Miller. Bonnie, thanks for wading through this process.
Sure.
Would you just give your?
This is Wayne, I was in trout, by the way, whoops, sorry.
Sorry.
I love you.
Go ahead.
I guess basically, we just want to do the same thing we have been doing with a couple of exceptions, which I noted in the proposal. And we also are curious about the possibility of trying, setting up on the lawn instead of out in the parking spaces. We've had a lot of trouble with clearing those parking spaces, whoops, early enough in the day to accommodate all the vendors. And it appears that Gretchen's is more and more successful all the time, those parking spaces fill up very early. So we're just throwing that out there, if we could try it and see how that, then those parking spaces would continue to be open for customers and you'd have a nice uniform look.
So you're actually asking that it, that you'd be able to set up right on the lawn?
Right on the lawn, right.
Okay, and then what would you do with your vehicles then?
We would offload at the sidewalk and then, and then move our vehicles.
Okay.
So we wouldn't be selling off of the vehicles, except for.
Fulton Street.
On Fulton Street. Everyone that has to sell out of their truck then would be on Fulton Street.
Let me, let me ask you this too, Bonnie. What if, I mean, that's a pretty wide sidewalk, and maybe this should be a question for the chief along with this, but could you just set up on the sidewalk?
We need to have a four-foot walkway, I believe, for pedestrians.
We might have problems with, yeah, not, not having enough room to, on the walkway.
A lot of the tents are 10 feet deep.
Unless we could set up partially on the lawn, that way we'd have, we could still leave the four feet closer to the highway, to the, to the road, to Main Street.
Well, firstly, I like the idea of setting up, not in the trucks, but either on the sidewalk or on the, on the lawn. My only concern, of course, about the lawn is, is the wear and tear on the lawn.
Right.
Although it's just once a week, basically, right?
It is just a once a week, and we don't obviously drive any stakes or anything. It's all, you know, we have waits for the tents that hold them.
Yeah. So what do you think, council? What, your other request too, I'm sorry, your other request too was on, what was it? The Weekend Strawberry Fest that you would use?
Oh, right, yes.
You want to just explain that a little bit?
We talked to, well, obviously, you had a request earlier for closing off everything on Strawberry Fest, which leaves the farmer's market out. So we talked to Chuck McDaniel down at Rural Insurance, and he would, he would, said it was fine for us to move down there for that day. And so we need your permission, because he says you own that place. So we, you know, as far as he's concerned, it's fine.
So you would be setting up on the city's portion of that property, or both ours and his?
In his sidewalk, or parking lot there, yes.
So it would be not just the city's parking lot, but also the parking lot that, that C&amp;D Rural Insurance rents from the city?
And that would be on Saturday, and there, there was no one there on Saturday. So.
Okay.
And then we were also wondering, if we're going to do that, if we could put a banner up there between there and the car lot right there to advertise the farmer's market?
For that? I mean, how far in advance would you put that?
For that day, but also if we could leave it there all, the whole summer, I don't know. That's up to you. But that's, it's quite visible there, and we kind of, we're looking for advertising, places to advertise, and it's all right with rural.
Well, I think the day of is, is okay, but Brennan, I defer to you here.
I would agree with you, Mayor, on the day of, that's okay. As for whether or not the city regulates temporary banners, I believe that would be a great area, but we have continuously enforced over the last couple of years that any signs are off-premise are not, are prohibited within the city. But we still have a challenge to that with other signs in the community. We have the banner, you know, years ago, the city implemented out near the interchange and some of the other gateways into the city to try to alleviate this problem of the banners all across the city, to have uniform areas where people can actually put a banner up. And I believe that's actually run through the Highway Department. They have to talk to Roger to put those banners up. Those were the designated locations for banners of this type to be installed throughout the city to try to minimize some of the clutter that was occurring throughout the community.
Okay. Rod?
I've got another question.
Hold on a second, let me let Roger.
The banners on a gateway into the city are for nonprofit? They don't allow any for profit to put their banners on them?
So they wouldn't be allowed to do this anyways?
This would be a profit, though.
Yeah.
So they wouldn't be allowed on them banner posts?
Okay.
The organization is actually a nonprofit organization that represents a larger.
Yeah, a for-profit group, yeah.
Among other things, yeah. The farm market is part of our initiative.
Well, I guess what Roger's saying is, is that's not why we put up those, those posts, is for something like this. We certainly want to be able to accommodate you on the, where you strawberry fest.
Let me ask you once more, another question. You've got the fence out there by the recycling center, and I think that would be another great place for, for a banner, permanent banner for the summer. And am I going to run into the same roadblock there?
That's the commission?
Yeah, I mean, the city doesn't alone, the city has one vote on that property, so you would have to request that from the, but it's also within the city, so.
We're back to the same situation.
Yeah.
So that's a no?
Kind of sounds like it.
Okay. Well, that's what we're looking at. We want to know what, what we can do and what we can't do. And obviously, we want to do what's right, but we also want to promote us. And I've been asked to go to about four other cities, and those cities promote the farm markets there. There, the city, the chamber does, there the, the council does, you know, all of those. So I'm just putting that out there.
So you're saying that we're not promoting you?
I didn't say that.
Then why'd you bring, why'd you bring it up? Why did you bring it up? If you're not saying we're not promoting you?
In several other cities, they put up the banners for us in those places. That is why I said it, and otherwise.
You bring back what the other cities do, and we'll take a look at it.
Okay, I'll do that. I can, I could tell you now, but I, I'll bring it back.
You bring back what their ordinance say that allow them to do that?
I don't know what their ordinance says, but that's what they do. Okay. But we're back to the Strawberry Fest then, and setting up at Rural, is that, we need a vote on that?
Is there, during Strawberry Fest, isn't there another, like a church group that always uses that parking lot during Strawberry Fest?
I thought that they used the property that was down by where Shamble was, where the Edward Jones is across from the.
Office.
Or am I wrong? I'm sorry. I don't know.
I just remember them coming forward, I don't know if it was the last two years or maybe it was just last year.
Okay. I don't think we've gotten a request from anybody else to use the city property across from QuickTrip that you know of? I don't know.
You just suspended the market last year for Strawberry Fest?
We did, yes. There were some of the vendors, individual vendors, that, that set up, and we did get permission through the chamber to, to set up on one of the side streets. But very few of the vendors took advantage of that. There's, it's not really the kind of market where the average person that's there for the Strawberry Fest isn't prepared to carry around three pounds of hamburger and a dozen years of corn for a couple hours. But it, we're mostly looking at having a venue where our regular customers can still come and get at us fairly easily and, and maybe enjoy Strawberry Fest too if they want to. So we just want to kind of conduct regular business off to the side a little bit.
Mayor Henry, for some odd reason, I'm vaguely remembering, I think the chamber actually is in that parking lot last year for one of their vendors during Strawberry Fest. I thought there was a request that came forward.
It's too bad Mitch left already.
But I, I don't remember, but I actually thought that there was a request brought forward last year.
Somebody used it, I'm not sure it was Strawberry Fest. I agree, but I can't remember the date either.
Would it be better Baptist Church do fundraiser, selling funnel cakes? I think so, it is. I parked there last year, that's why I remember. I don't know if it was a one-time thing or if they've always done that.
Well, let's, let's do this, okay?
Okay.
Okay. First of all, let's, let's talk about, are we okay, and we would need a motion then, are we okay with allowing the, the farmer's market to use the lawn instead of just parking on the street?
I guess what I would prefer is to have the combination where there's part on the sidewalk and, and parts on the lawn rather than the whole lawn. You know, that would make more sense, I would think, than just to open up the whole lawn.
Would reduce any, anywhere that there is, it would minimize it.
That's what I would think would be best.
Okay. So they could do either or, is that what you're saying, Paul?
No, I would, I would think, I would restrict them to being partially on the sidewalk, leaving a four foot for pedestrian traffic, and then the back end of their booths or whatever is most appropriate being on the lawn. So they could encroach on the lawn, but wouldn't be on the whole rest of the other part of the lawn.
But they would not be on the street?
They would not be on the street.
On Main Street?
That's correct.
I mean, they're still going to be on East Fulton Street.
Yes.
I was going to say about the same thing. If they kept their sale stands so the people walk on the sidewalk and they're not on the grass, only ones on the grass would actually be the sellers.
Good point, yeah.
You know, if you could set up tight so you just limit the traffic that way.
Okay. Brennan?
I do want to double-check. I don't, I think four feet is incorrect. I think it's either, if we're talking Main Street, I think, because that is a wider sidewalk, we're, I think in the uninstructed area is actually six feet. But I would have to double-check the ordinance. We have that in place on Main Street specifically.
Okay.
So just, whatever it is, we just, you know, four feet or six, we'll just have to get that clarified.
So if we, if we okay this, we're approving whatever the city allow, or is requiring, right?
Yes.
So if they have to move more onto the lawn to make that, to follow that requirement?
With our ordinances.
Okay. Anybody want to make that in the form of a motion?
Since I brought it up, I would be happy.
I'll second it. A motion by Hagan, second by Peterson, that we approve of the farmer's market using the sidewalk. the sidewalk and, uh, city square lawn to, uh, set up, uh, their, their booths, uh, instead of using, uh, Main Street, uh, for that. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, Strawberry Fest, uh, what are your thoughts, counsel, on allowing them to set up on the, the city portion of it? I, I'm assuming that they got permission from, uh, C and D, Chuck McDaniel Rural Insurance, so they could just stay on the, the part that they rent from, that, that C and D rents from the city, and, and they would be okay with that. Uh, but they're asking that they also use the city parking lot part of that also.
I, I'm not certain how much of that is the city's and how much is the insurance.
What is, where's, where's the...
I think the easiest way to, go ahead, Roger.
It's the west side of the building, the parking lot straight out from the building.
Okay.
West side going toward, or South Franklin Street is the city's, rest of the lot is rented, Rural Insurance.
So, going back up towards the Main Street then is, is all the insurance company?
Correct.
Well, that's plenty of space for us.
So, that's all you're requesting?
Sure.
Then you don't need anything from us?
Yes, well, you own the property.
Uh, it was just, uh...
He was, he suggested that we talk to you.
Yeah.
You don't need our permission.
Okay.
You need his permission. He's the one that has to be liable for you being on that property, make sure that you have proof of insurance. I think he knows that, he's an insurance agent. You don't need our, you don't need our approval.
Okay, wonderful.
All right, anything else?
I had one more.
Yeah, go ahead.
In regards to the banner on the day of the event, is it going to be over this tree, where's the banner going?
Oh, no, it's, we just have these, like, eight, are they eight feet?
Yeah, eight feet wide and thirty, fifty.
Okay, and that's gonna be on the property, on the property where you're at?
Probably.
Okay.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, let's move on, license report number twelve seventy-four, this is a Class A beer and intoxicating liquor license for QuickTrip Incorporated. Henry, anything unusual about this?
No, we do have a representative of QuickTrip, uh, I'm assuming you're Brenda Lee?
Um, no, I'm actually Carrie Grudem, I'm her assistant, so, yeah.
I think this is to be consistent with your licensing at your downtown store on Fulton, however, you're not selling alcohol, and we under, you understand that, but you're still asking for the license.
Yes.
And this would be through June thirty, uh, and then you would be in a renewal mode?
Going forward.
Yeah.
I don't get it. You're not, you're not selling alcohol, but you want a license?
We have beer and malt beverages, but it's in a separate entity of our actual sales floor. We have a separate entrance for it, we have a bell on that door, we have a little bell on the counter, so everything can be, we just jump back and forth from sales floor counter to beer counter.
Right.
Yeah, but we do sell beer.
Well, I guess the, the, the part we don't get is, is that why are you asking for an intoxicating liquor license when you're only selling beer?
I don't know.
Okay.
Do you have plans to do that?
Not that I'm aware of, so I just thought we were renewing our beer license.
So, are they actually maybe not filling out the correct form?
Well, I can tell you Barb had this conversation with, with your man, with your, your, uh, boss, and explained this fully, and they're willing to pay the money, um, I, I guess they're, they're wanting options, um, and this was the license they applied for, for your downtown store, so this is consistent with what you have at the downtown store, so, I mean, they're making the request, it's a viable request, it is pending background checks and everything, so, I think we're bringing it forward because they applied and they want it.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure what they plan on bringing in, nor if they're...
And this is, this is just for, from now until through June thirtieth, Henry, or this is for next?
Yeah, because the license period goes to, to June thirty, so, yeah, they would...
It says twenty sixteen.
Does it?
So, it would start on July first?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is separate from the, the mass ones, oh.
Right, right.
So, this would start on July first of two thousand fifteen and run through June thirtieth of two thousand sixteen? And they just want the option of being able to sell liquor?
Well, some of our, some of our stores do sell liquor, um, we're just a store that just sells beer and malt beverages right now, currently, not sure what their plan is in the next year, but...
Chief, any issues here?
I guess new territory, they're applying for a license they don't intend to sell, I don't...
That doesn't mean they can't sell, I mean, and once they get the license, they can do it in, you know?
Well, I guess my question is, is that if they do decide to put liquor in there, they can go ahead and do that, if we okay that, do we have an issue? I mean, they do have a separate entrance, uh, people can't get from the convenience store to the, to the liquor store, I think that follows all of the rules that we have, so they certainly could do that, I don't know why they wouldn't be able, I, that's why I asked. John Arden, what do you think?
Initially, they just applied for a beer license, and we changed the ordinance concerning having that separate entrance, but a contiguous, uh, counter so that they could service both sides of it, and I don't see anything wrong with this as far as, there is no restriction on the number of Class A alcohol licenses in the cities I'm aware of.
Great.
So, if, there's no reason not to.
Okay.
What is the fee for this?
Is it six hundred dollars also? Henry? Six hundred dollars.
Mayor, I'd move for approval.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Mayo, second by Pritchatsky, that we approve of license report number twelve seventy-four, Class A beer and intoxicating liquor license for QuickTrip Incorporated. Any discussion?
There's nothing wrong with them, we do this, they can have alcohol or liquor at any time.
They can.
July first.
Yeah, Brennan?
Is that at both their locations, or are we just speaking of the downtown? I don't remember that the QQ store actually has beer out there.
They do.
I am actually up at the QQ store, I'm not representing downtown or no, but it's the same, we have the same exact setup, we sell the same exact...
Yeah, they do. Okay. All right, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Uh, next we have license report number twelve seventy-five, this is a Class B intoxicating liquor license and Class B fermented malt beverages, and Class A beer and intoxicating liquor license, and Class B fermented malt beverage license, and Class C wine license. Basically, these are for, um, bar owners and, uh, the other liquor stores in town here. You'll see a list of the ones that have already applied, I, I talked to Barb today, there are a couple that we'll see again in, in the June meeting, um, these all have to be okayed, uh, prior to June thirtieth, uh, because that's when, July first is when the licenses, uh, go from July first through June thirtieth. Unless there is anything that is a concern of anybody, I, we'd be looking for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve license report number twelve seventy-five.
Second. A motion by Hackett, second by Kealan, that we approve license report number twelve seventy-five. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against?
Mayor Epstein, I'm one of the bar owners.
Okay. So am I, but I'm not voting, okay? So, we had, uh, eight ayes, no nos, one abstention. Okay. Next, we have license report number twelve seventy-six, this is an arcade amusement device license. Again, you can see the list of the names that are in there, there will be a couple of stragglers that you'll see in the next month's, um, agenda.
In the category of banging my head against the wall, um, I asked, I've asked this in the past, um, why do we have to approve gambling machines in the city? And I'll direct that to you.
I don't know, they're not legal, they're investigated by the state if they have less than, five is under the jurisdiction of the state, so, we don't have any authority to regulate them locally, because the way the statute is now written, that was changed a few years ago to take it out of our hands.
So, that's why all of these are five or less, basically?
Yep, yes, over five is a felony, under five is a forfeiture, and, you know, only enforcement action that can be taken is by state authorities.
And they choose not to?
They're, they're overwhelmed, right, but technically, they are not legal.
But we can't do anything about it?
Correct. I don't know about the licensing part of it, but we cannot enforce the gaming laws under that, only the state can.
Do we have, uh, ability to not license the gambling devices if we so choose?
I would have to go to Attorney Hart.
And I would pose that question to him.
This would also cover pinball machines, jukeboxes, I think the arcade license does have to do with dancing and various other things that they do in those establishments, not just necessarily gambling machines, so you're approving various other things besides those machines?
So, all of those devices you mentioned are under the gambling machines license?
They're under amusement device license, but this is not a gambling machine license, this is just amusement device.
It, it, it says right on the...
It says how many gambling machines they have, for instance, Nelson Strike Drone has four gambling machines and ten others, which means they have pinball machines or whatever else, and that's what we're regulating. It just so happens that the Department of, I don't know if it's the Treasury or whatever, are the only, the only enforcement commission that can do anything about gambling machines if it's five or less. We can't do anything about it, so there really isn't any discussion about whether we do it or don't do it. They're theoretically illegal under the statute, but the, that statute does provide that municipalities cannot enforce it. We can enforce situations where there's more than five machines.
Are we compelled to, to issue the licenses for these gambling machines?
I don't know that you're issuing licenses for gambling machines, you're issuing a license to provide them with the ability to have amusement devices and arcades.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else, motion?
Move to approve license report twelve seventy-six.
Second.
A motion by Dave Peterson, second by Pritchatsky, that we approve of license report number twelve seventy-six, which is an arcade amusement device license. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Next, we have license reports number twelve seventy-seven, which is the operator's license. Again, you can see a list of, uh, all the people that have applied so far, you'll probably see a few in June that, uh, didn't quite make the deadline, and we'll have to get their license, uh, uh, taken care of in the June meetings, uh, there are some requirements of these operators, and you can see that, uh, they're pending some checks and, and also that they do not owe the city any money before they can actually receive their license.
Move to approve license number twelve seventy-seven, pending background checks and any fines owed to the city.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Kealan, that we approve of license report number twelve seventy-seven, operator's license. Any discussion?
Mayor, just for information, Barb did say there's just two or three that we'll have to collect some outstanding fines on, so that's really pretty great compliance, given how many we have.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried.
Mayor Epstein on that one.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have one abstention again.
My wife's an operator.
Eight ayes, zero nos, one abstention. All right, uh, let's, uh, move on, then Kathy, you're back up again, this is approval of a change in employee benefits brokers.
Thank you, Mayor. This spring, uh, we were notified by our current employee benefit broker, M3, that, um, Vicki was, uh, retiring, and we thought that this would be a good time to see what other employee benefit brokerage firms, uh, could bring to the city, especially with the implementation of the Affordable Care Act. Um, tonight I have, uh, Rayanne Bodry from the Horton Group, which is the, um, Employee Health Insurance Committee's recommendation, they, we did in, interview four firms, um, we had M3 come back, uh, the Horton Group, Ansan Associates, and Williston Associates, and it was the decision of the group to, uh, go with the Horton Group. Rayanne, you wanna...
Sure, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for having us and for inviting us to respond to your request for proposal. I sent some information along for your packets that talked about, a little bit about the Horton Group and myself and the team, and I just wanted to say we're looking forward to hitting the ground running on June first. Um, I know that's a worn-out phrase, but we've actually started to work with some of the city's vendors to get some information, so that when we, um, are onboard officially on June one, we can start talking with WA Insurance Trust, make sure that we have the most lucrative renewal in the most, um, efficient manner and very, very quickly. We also wanted to ask them to do some adjustments with, um, renewal scheduling, to ask for a fifteen-month rate guarantee, to get the city out of the community rating for another year, um, to just be more in compliance with the Affordable Care Act and get the best possible rate. Also, that would bring us to a potential of a one-one renewal date. The city has asked us to explore the possibility of a high deductible health plan that would also be compatible with a health savings account, those are best done on a calendar year for tax purposes and filings and all of those kinds of reporting things, so, we're quickly working with that. On behalf of the employees, we have put together a team sheet that will go out, um, we've asked Kathy and Tina to make that available to every employee and retiree here, so that they have direct phone lines and email addresses to each of their team members, so that if people have a claim question, they have some things that they cannot get resolved with any of the carriers that we're working with on their behalf, that they have an advocate in our office and that we're there to do that right away. The last and most important thing is, we will be helping the city with all their filings and their reporting filings under the Affordable Care Act up to and including the new ten-oh-nine-fours and the ten-oh-nine, uh, ten-oh-nine-fives, so, we're, uh, all ready for the IRS compliance testing and we're ready to go. So, thank you again for having us, and we would, um, be very honored to enjoy a working relationship with the city of Opeka.
A couple of questions, it, it was just a few years ago that, Henry, we switched from a calendar year plan to a fiscal year plan, so, a couple of questions there, number one, are we gonna have the numbers in place so that we have a, a good concrete number for our budget? And two, is this gonna cost us more money now to go back to a calendar year versus a fiscal year health plan?
Well, that question got asked during the interview, so I would, would Rayanne respond?
It did, um, I have been working in the employee benefits field for the last thirty-one years of my career, and the last twenty specifically in the public entity niche, so the vendors that I work with, including your incumbent, as well as the carriers that would propose to work with the city of Opeka, know that I need my renewal numbers, um, a hundred and twenty days out, so even if we change, we will have our renewal on or about September tenth. Every year I do a block underwriting call with those vendors, so if we were to move back to a calendar year, we would have our renewal numbers in place without, without question, so they know that that's an expectation. Secondarily, though, with some of the things the city has wanted to explore, considering a high deductible health plan and an HSA, you have your flexible spending accounts are on a little bit different year, so we would have to line that up and sync it up, or we wouldn't enjoy some of the tax advantages, and employees would be somewhat confused and probably a little bit disadvantaged in their personal relationships with those types of accounts, so, we would work very, very hard to make sure we had a strategic plan to do the education, but that, yes, we would have those renewal rates. I'm expecting, I'm anticipating that we will know your renewal for ten-one, whether it's for twelve months or fifteen months, by no later than the middle of July.
So, we're not looking at a three-month... So we're not looking at a three-month renewal, we're looking at a 15-month renewal?
Correct. It would be a 1-1-17 strategy if we were gonna move to that, to that decision.
Okay, and we don't have a high deductible health plan right now?
You have a high deductible health plan, Mr. Mayor, but you don't have one that's what's called HSA compatible, so there are still some first-dollar benefits that are available under those plans that you're enjoying.
And don't we contribute to an HSA for our employees, some of the employees?
You contribute to a health reimbursement account, it's, it's a slightly different funding mechanism.
Okay. Okay, and you're talking about going from an HSA, or an HRA to an HSA?
It was definitely something we wanted to explore.
Those were some, some of the proposals, some of the questions that the Employee Health Insurance Committee members had asked during the interview process. We also explored the possibility of self-insurance, so part of the, the process is going to be with this WEAT trust renewal is really just to get us off of the community rating timeline, so that instead of looking at us for renewals as, based on our experience, the community rating's going to base us on our, where we are physically, so what our health, healthcare costs are for our location. So instead of knowing that I've got five or six people that may have heart transplants, isn't going to be the, the driving force to the premium costs. So by going on to this 15-month renewal, we'll avoid getting a community rating for at least another year, be able to explore whether we need to change into the high deductible HSA instead of a HRA, and possibility of self-insurance, so, or even a hybrid model of that. So just some of the cost analysis that we need to do on our health insurance policy for the employees and for our costs is just part of the exploration, but the 15-month will just buy us some time, and if we go, with going for that renewal.
Okay, so we do understand, though, that we do not fully fund the HRA, and if we go to an HSA, we're gonna have to fully fund those for each one of the employees if we decide to do that.
Right.
We do understand that, that we have cost savings in the HRA where we won't have those in the HSA.
Right, but it was just, it was one of those questions that had come through, this isn't what we're, we're proposing at all, it's just one of those things that we're looking at as cost and, and options. So it wasn't anything that this was going to be what we're going to go for, for a renewal from WEAT trust, what we're looking at is just getting our renewal right now for what we have in place.
There also are new rules under Health Savings Account Funding Mechanisms, Mr. Mayor, where you can do a monthly contribution, you can do it quarterly, as long as the employee knows how much the employer entity is going to be contributing on their behalf, so they don't go over a certain dollar amount, there are different methodologies to fund those vehicles now that are allowed under the IRS code.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Kathy, what was it about, what was it about this particular group that the committee found excelled over the other ones?
I think it was the fact that the team members were present, and that they were looking at different proposals that going, the Horton Group was the only one that said about doing a 15-month renewal and for getting away from the required community ratings, where we may get a higher increase prior to that time, and be able to change and look at the policy, giving more time to do that. If we didn't do that, we would probably be under the community's rating for 2016, so now we've just pushed it off for another year. So it'll help in, in, in reducing any increase in the premium costs shared by the employees. So we just bought some time, is what we've done, to be able to look at other avenues. Willis was the other group that the committee liked, but the, the committee felt that the Horton Group was known, and that, I've worked with the Horton Group for 14 years in my previous employers. The Horton Group for the Village of Greendale, when they went to market, saved the village $440,000 on a change in their health insurance premium, when they went off the state plan. So I think my experience that is a known, that Horton's been able to deliver in the past to, knowing the impacts to the, to the municipality's costs and to the employees' cost, and being accessible, was the reason why they recommended Horton, because Willis was unknown. Anse and M3, the committee felt that the proposed, the presentation and their proposals were not up to par with the ones that from Horton or Willis.
Paul, as a committee member, I can tell you, they, they want, they want our business. Their presentation was far superior, and they brought all their team members, everybody that's listed here came to that meeting, so that made a big impression on us, where some of the others, I mean, they, it just wasn't as polished, and they put a lot of effort into, into the, into their presentation. And my second question, and please excuse my ignorance, but how, how does the Horton Group get compensated for the services that they provide the city?
Currently, the proposed rule under, with the city of Opeka is we would be taking over at this point in time, the commission level that is built in for M3, that M3 was receiving, so the carriers are currently paying the freight through commission. That can be changed upon renewal, and we can take the commission out, and the city can pay directly, it's a, it's a consulting fee or arrangement if the city would choose to do that. So we, we are going, the one thing at renewal, there've been a couple of questions about what that level commission is, the typical standard commission that we receive from WEA as your incumbent health, health insurance carrier, for example, is one and a half percent. There was some discussion at the committee meeting that M3 may have been receiving more than that. Horton never takes more than standard, that is, that is our philosophy, and that is the direction of my corporate office, which unfortunately or fortunately is in Orland Park, Illinois, and Illinois was hit pretty hard under the Elliot Spitzer insurance investigation, so we're pretty strict on what we can take as compensation.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Motion?
I'd move to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mayo, second by Dave Peterson, that we approve of hiring the Horton Group from Peewaki, Wisconsin, as the city's employee benefit broker of record. Any discussion? The only discussion I have, Henry and Kathy, I would like to actually meet with them if I could, so if we could set up a time where we could, it can either be by telephone or, or whatever, or...
Absolutely.
But, yeah, I'd like to get a little more information on it, thank you. Any other discussion? Sandy will take the role.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Eric Olson? Gillian Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
And Alan Kealan?
Aye.
Eight ayes, one absent, motion carried.
Thank you, good luck, Kathy built you up that you're gonna save us all this money, so we're looking forward to that. Thanks. All right, I guess we're, we have nothing for issues, projects, for discussions, communications, recommendation of the mayor, I have nothing additional tonight. We do have one item that we need to discuss in closed session, so we're gonna close up shop here and allow council to discuss this item in closed session, so we're gonna ask people with the motion to go into closed session, that anybody that's not on city council, please remove themselves from the room, and we'll close and lock the doors at that time. As far as staff, individuals, Henry, anybody that we need to...
Well, Kathy and Brendan were involved in some of these discussions, and then the city attorney.
So, I mean, if you, Chief and Aaron and Roger, if you guys want to, and Peg, if you wanted to go, you certainly can, you can certainly stay if you want to, too, that's fine. So we'd need a motion to convene into closed session.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Kealan, second by Hagan, that we convene into closed session in accordance with Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, paran E, to deliberate or to negotiate the purchase of public property as it concerns the sale of city-owned land in the Business and Technology Park. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will take the role.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Alan Kealan?
Aye.
And Gillian Peterson. Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thanks.